Good evening. Welcome to the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings. Today is Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Sir.
Fred Wood, pastor of the Riverbank Colonists Church, also resident right near Garcia's Market, so just a little ways from here. Let's bow our heads for a short word of prayer. Father God, we come to you tonight, we're praying, Lord, once again, for your guidance for this council. We're thankful, Lord, again, for this council and how they've cooperated one with another, even during their times of disagreement. And we're praying again tonight that you'd give them your leadership and your wisdom to know how to direct this city. And, Lord, this is the week of the Wine and Cheese Festival, and we're praying, God, for your protection, especially, Lord, on our peace officers. You'd give us a good weekend, this coming weekend. Thank you for this beautiful weather. We're praying, God, that you would just let this weekend be one that'd go down in history as one that your safety and your hand was upon the city of action. And also, God, a special prayer request for Pastor Neil, you would touch him also. And we're asking, God, for your blessing upon each one here, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
God bless his heart. I have to run tonight.
Okay. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member, Anne Jones Cruz, here. Council authority member, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council authority member, District 2, Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council or authority member or staff member who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to commence with presentations on items 1.1 and 1.2. For 1.1, it's the proclamation Walk to School Day, October 10th, 2018.
We're gonna let Kathy and the kids stand.
Okay, and the kids, that'd be fine. Come on, kids. All the kids, come on up.
We have a whole group of kids.
Very good. So it doesn't matter where I stand? I have to stand over here, in the center? Okay, I guess.
Do I have to stand?
Yeah, you have to turn to.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, everybody come closer. So we don't have to do a photo shoot afterwards, because he should be able to get it while we're doing this.
Perfect.
The City of Riverbank proclamation, Walk to School Day. Whereas the City of Riverbank deems the health and safety of its students as a primary concern. And whereas the lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities took steps to make pedestrian safety a priority. Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in the rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children. And being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. Whereas driving students to school by private vehicles contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. Whereas an important role for parents and community is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day and the health and environmental risk related to physical inactivity and air pollution. Whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and elevate walking and bicycling conditions in their community. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaims Wednesday, October 10th, 2018, as Walk to School Day throughout the City of Riverbank, and as such encourages everyone to promote the safety and health of children today and everywhere, and every day. Sign today, October 9th. And do you have anything to say?
I do. I have a student right here, our president of our student body.
And by the way, Kathy is the principal of the California Avenue Elementary School.
So introduce yourself and tell us.
Hello, my name is. Hello, my name is Justelle Fernandez, and I'm the president of California Avenue School. Tomorrow, we'll be walking to school and meeting up at Castleburg Park, and we'll be walking at 7:25.
And we're in a form of human best.
Yeah.
And get as many students as possible to walk the California Avenue. So hope you guys open your doors and see us walking tomorrow.
And the others?
Would you guys like to say your names?
Yes, at least your names. Come on over.
Yeah, come on, say your names. You guys came here, we need to make sure.
Hi, my name is Katie Alrez.
And you say, I'm the next president of the school. And.
You're next. Go ahead, honey.
Hello, my name is Carlos Reals. And.
Well, Carlos, I'm gonna give you this proclamation for you safekeeping to give to your principal after we're done up here, okay? All right? You have to show it to him, the proclamation. There you go. You got it? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. All right. All right, for the next one is the planning and building manager, Donna Kenny. Can you please come on up? So I have a feeling that let's do the introduction and then the proclamation.
Sounds good. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I would like to introduce your new part-time neighborhood improvement officer, one, Mark Ellenberg.
Come on up. All right, the City of Riverbank proclamation, National Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. So we appreciate you already. Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the work they do in improving the quality of life of residents and businesses of local communities. Whereas the role of many code enforcement officers have expanded in recent years with jurisdictions increasingly relying on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their communities. Whereas code enforcement officers have a highly visible role that requires regular professional interaction with the public to provide the safety, health, and welfare of citizens throughout the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and the application of housing, zoning, and nuisance law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council calls upon Riverbank residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation to the city's neighborhood improvement officers whom serve as code enforcement officers for striving to improve and maintain the quality of life. Let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that the second week of October, 2018, and annually thereafter be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Riverbank. Sign today. And I assert, welcome aboard.
Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to say anything?
Don't have too much. I just want to thank everybody. I started last Monday, and it's been so welcoming here, and I'm looking forward to getting to know the community. I live here, I haven't been here a short time, and getting back into the workforce, I have a lot to learn, so it'll be a pleasure meeting all of you and getting to know you better. Thank you.
Meeting all of them in a positive way.
Yes, very positive.
Okay, thank you, and welcome. Thank you, Donna. All right, moving on, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments today? Seeing none, we'll move forward on the consent calendar, consisting of Item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of September 25th, 2018, City Council and the Local Redevelopment Authority minutes. Item 3C, award bid for the Riverbank Community Center Roof Repair Project to Pacific Valley Roofing. Is there anyone wishing to pull any consent item? Is there anyone from the public wishing to discuss any consent item? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
Make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council authority member, Fosse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 51, a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing for consideration of a resolution approving and adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2018 through 2023. And there is a typo in the, on the agenda.
We'll make that correction. Thank you, Mayor. As we wait for Kathleen, who, as you can tell, is in rehab currently. But it's been nice enough to stay tonight to present what is one of the larger parts of her workflow every year, which is putting together our capital improvement plan, which is a lot of work. And it represents not only a wish list of items that we need to get done, but also kind of a roadmap of how we intend to do it. And she puts a lot of work into it, and so we really appreciate it, because without that work, the road projects you're seeing around Riverbank, the water and sewer projects and others wouldn't be getting done. So I'll turn it over to her to give you an idea about what is on this five-year update.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So tonight, we're gonna go over the fiscal year 2018-23 capital improvement program. I mean, the presentation tonight is gonna show you the 2018-2019 projects that we have coming up. So if the CIP is acceptable to council, we'd like to move forward and adopt the five-year plan for this year. So the capital improvement plan, CIP, is being presented tonight to the council for the opportunity to review and provide input on the projects. The CIP is not a budget document, but rather a planning tool to be used in conjunction with budget documents. It is a work-in-progress document to show transparency in the project staff is currently managing, planning, and researching funding sources. So each project requires a specific implementation and financing plan, possible environmental review, and at times collaboration with other agencies. Each project within the CIP requires specific city council action at each major milestone. So the CIP is broken up into these eight different sections. The presentation tonight will highlight the projects staff is planning and proposing for fiscal year 1819. Some of these capital items highlighted in this PowerPoint currently have no funding source, but we wanted to put these in here so that council is aware and the public that we are diligently looking for funding and that these are high-priority projects on our list. So first, we'll start with the street projects. So for Measure L, street projects are various streets. For 1819, we will continue to use our Measure L and SB 1 funds to Cape seal and slurry seal our roads here in Riverbank. 8th Street overlay Patterson to Townsend, we'll be working on the preliminary engineering and also environmental and construction. There'll be some ADA improvements along here as well. The funding sources are our regional surface transportation program funding and Measure L. Calendar Avenue improvements, we've been working on the design and preliminary engineering for Phase 1 of this project. Construction phase, we have it approximately scheduled for 2021, but we're looking for funding for this project. So we may be able to use some Measure L funds, may be able to use some system development fee funds, but we'll try to be creative in that. Signal at Rozell and Patterson and pedestrian railroad crossing, sidewalk infill along Rozell and Patterson. Environmental is complete. All the right-of-way has been dedicated. Utility relocation is almost complete, and we're estimated to begin that project in spring 2019. The delay on this project was working with the railroad and the railroad's cost. We received two estimates from the railroad, which exceeded the funding that we had. So we're trying to be creative in obtaining funds to get that project completed. But I believe we'll be able to get that under construction in September of 2019. Patterson Road Sidewalk Infill, this project went out to bid, it was awarded, and it will begin construction within the next couple of weeks. Rozell Avenue Morrell Road Intersection Improvements, we're working on right-of-way in construction for fiscal year 1819. Are trying to redesign, get some right-of-way and redesign that intersection so that it's safer for people pulling out on, off of Morrell onto Rozell. Rozell Avenue Sidewalk Right-of-Way Drainage ADA Improvements, this project was slated to be constructed this last year. We ran into issues with obtaining right-of-way. There's a lot of properties that the city needs to obtain right-of-way from. Some were more than willing to give us the right-of-way for the improvements. Some did not want to give us any right-of-way, so we're working with those residents, trying to get a good plan there. We didn't want to hodgepodge it. We want to make sure that it's done right. So we moved the funds over, the CMAC funds and LTF funds, over to this fiscal year. Bicycling striping along Rozell Avenue, we'll be working on that project as well. That's also CMAC funded by congestion mitigation and air quality funds. First Street improvements, we're gonna begin the preliminary engineering and construction on this project. The PE is gonna be 1819, the construction will be 1920. In this area here, we have the railroad. Sometimes it gets backed up, so we have people driving onto the railroad property through the dirt just to get onto First Street. So we're trying to work on possibly creating a pork chop there, moving some utilities, and making it easier for people to turn onto First Street when the, when it's back, the traffic's backed up. Our Patterson Road Pedestrian Access, Third Street to Terminal, this project, we've tried to work with the railroad to try and get some right-of-way. We've had our struggles. We do have CMAC funding to begin the preliminary engineering for this project. The city feels strongly, I know council feels strongly about this. We are gonna move forward with the preliminary engineering. We do have a new BNSF rep who seems a lot more open to this concept that we have. So we are hoping that this will be a project that we can push forward. So any questions on the street projects?
You have a lot of CMAC.
Yes, we do, Mayor.
You have a lot of CMAC, and that may go away in a couple of years.
Unfortunately, we're right. We're gonna, I will be fighting for it, and I know you will.
Kathleen, these projects that we have funded through CMAC are already committed, right?
They are, yes. Yes, we will fight, we won't let give those funds up. We'll be mayor. So next, we'll start with the sewer projects. Our Public Works Director, Michael, is working with, with a consultant on creating a cross-connection reduction program. Sanitary sewer pipe replacements identified in the sewer rate study scheduled for 1819. So here's a list of sewer pipeline replacements. Wastewater treatment projects. The first project, Resurface Entry Road, this project was already completed, but it was completed in the 1718 fiscal year, so that's why it's on here. It looks great, and I should have got a new picture there to show you what it looked like, but it turned out really well. Wastewater treatment plant completion upon 9. This project went out to bid, it came back over the engineer's estimate. So I believe that this project is gonna come to council next, the next, next council meeting, possibly see if we can get some additional funds to get this project completed. Motor pool equipment. And Mayor, yes, we have more CMAC funds, so we have $190,000 to spend on alternative fuel vehicles. So we will be purchasing some vehicles for our public works and our staff out in the field. Building facilities, community center renovation project, which is currently out to bid. And this is Phase 1 of that project. It covers the floors, ceiling, walls, and doors. Cardozo Middle School Gym Roof, this is a joint project with Riverbank Unified and the City of Riverbank, and the city's portion on this project is $20,000. City Hall South Replace Aged HVAC Unit. So we have building facilities identified ADA improvements. We'll be working on some, continuing to work on some improvements at the teen center, City Hall North, Sheriff's Building, and I know that's not a picture of the Sheriff's Building, but it's close by. The Scout Hall. Parks and Recreation Projects, so these are our Parks and Recreation Director's projects that she is excited to possibly see move forward. We have our Parks Master Plan, and we are looking for funding for this. Crossroads at Homewood Basin, benches, tables, and ADA improvements. Resurface Cardozo Tennis Courts. Redesign Jacob Myers Park Entryway. And then here's some identified ADA improvements that we'll be working on this year. Rotary, Centennial Park, Silva Park, Sorenson Park, Harless Park, Zarillo Park, Jacob Myers Park, Castleburg Park, got all these beautiful parks we have. So tonight, asking the City Council after the review of the projects is to provide input on the proposed CIP projects. Not only the ones I showed you, but the ones that are listed for fiscal year 2018 through 2023. And if acceptable, the council is recommended that council adopt the five-year capital improvement plan, knowing that each project will come to you individually before we move forward on these projects. So is there any questions?
I do have a question. The Cardozo Gym.
Yes.
Do the schools' part of, the schools' portion of the funding, does that depend on Measure G, or do we know?
I believe the school is paying half of that. Yes, it's already, the school's paying half, the city's paying half. It has nothing to do with the Measure G.
Okay, because I know that they want us to approve Measure G because it's gonna help with improvements.
Right.
Okay, just curious.
No. You're welcome.
Before I open it to the public hearing, there are a lot of ADA that are pushed out, one, two, three, five years, all five years. Is there any way to move them closer?
If we could get funding, there's just no funding for ADA, unfortunately. A lot of it comes out of the general fund. We're looking for funding for ADA. We're constantly, you know, constantly looking at, you know, consultants that, even the consultant who did our ADA transition plan, and there's just no funding out there. So, especially for public, you know, the parks.
Okay.
So, and now the L and L, depending on the reserves, the L and L parks were able to use the landscape and lighting funds in the budgets to cover those. But the ones that we're real concerned with is like Castleburg Park and the ones that are used a lot, that we'd like to get those, you know, up on, you know, up a lot quicker, so. But we are always looking for funding, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You can stay there.
Okay.
Well, you have a question?
Question, yeah. When will the renovations start at the community center?
It's out to bid right now. I believe they had a meeting today, and there, we haven't had any, anyone pick up bids, any, any construction companies, so we're gonna extend it a couple more weeks. So, once, once it's awarded. So, once, once it's awarded to someone, it should, should start soon after.
We'd hope to get, you know, if we were, best case scenario would be if we were to get some competitive bids and award it. There's a timeline in the packet, but if you talk to the architect or, or staff about it, it's not a super difficult project for a contractor. So we think that, I think Sue and I had talked about, we expected 60 days, maybe 90 days if they really, but it's a nice cold weather project because they're indoors most of the time. So provided we get a good, good bid and a good contractor, it'll go quickly.
All right.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on our five-year CIP? Seeing none, I close public comment, close the public hearing. I bring it back to the council for any consideration.
I make a motion we approve item 5.1.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second on approving item 5.1.
Council members Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Item 6.1, Consideration of the Proposed Resolutions and Related Agreements. One, Resolution Approving, Authorizing, and Directing Execution by the City Manager of an amended and restated joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. And, two, a resolution approving associate membership by the City of California Enterprise Development Authority, authorizing and directing the execution of the city manager of an associated membership agreement related to associate membership of the city in authority, authorizing the city to join the Fake Tree Pace Program, authorizing the California Enterprise Development Authority to conduct contractual assessment proceedings and levy contractual assessments within the territory of the City of Riverbank, authorizing the execution of the indemnification agreement and authorizing related actions. And, three, a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the territory of the city in the CSC, correction, CSCDA Open Pace Programs, authorizing California Statewide Communities Development Authority to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessment within the territory of the city and authorizing related actions.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. You know, I actually think my staff report will be shorter than the title of this item, but, so, we've talked about pace programs a number of times at council, so I didn't put together a slideshow tonight because we've, as I said, we've discussed this a number of times. But for those who don't know, in general, what a pace program is, is many years ago, the state created an opportunity for funding programs to be created that allowed people to fund property assessed clean energy programs on their property. And so what that means in plain English is that if you have, if you own a home and you had an idea to put in, your AC unit out, went out, and you wanted to put in a more energy efficient unit, you could apply through a variety of programs, some of which we already have in, in Riverbank, to essentially place a loan on your property, which would allow you to move forward with, with the project, and then you pay it off incrementally as you would normally pay your property taxes. In a nutshell, that's how it works. It, it essentially allows people that may have trouble getting traditional financing to, to move forward with these home improvement projects. So it just acts as another further option for people if, if they'd like to do things to improve their homes. There's all kinds of ideas and examples of these kinds of projects. Double pane windows, as I said, AC or heating units, solar panels, et cetera. So currently, we have two programs in, in Riverbank. We have the HERO program and Y-Green, which council approved last year. And at the time, council approved the second program just to continue to create a competitive environment through these various different programs so that the consumer gets a lot of choice, and, you know, obviously more competition will create better, better end prices for the, for the consumer. There are two, as the mayor mentioned, two programs this evening that are requesting a permission to, to do business in Riverbank essentially. They are Open Pace and Fig Tree. They operate very similarly to the programs that I, I just mentioned and would create a further competitive environment. What has happened since council has last discussed this is there's been a number of regulatory bills passed in the last year and a half, two years, that have increased regulation on these types of businesses and increased consumer protections. There are, for example, AB 2693 allows essentially people to cancel, if they sign up for one of these projects and they decide, I think they get three, three business days, they can cancel that if they decide it's not for them. SB 242, which essentially requires that teleph, recorded telephone calls are made to consumers to confirm that they understand the key terms of what they're signing up for, so that no one gets locked into a situation that they were unaware of, walking in, sort of the same kind of thing you see with lending practices for, for mortgages. SB 242 also prohibits kickbacks to contractors for steering consumers to a particular program and misrepresentation as to tax deductibility of pace assessments. AB 1248 establishes a state oversight of the California Pace Program, so you now have a state agency that sort of watches these programs, make sure that they're held accountable for screening, training, and monitoring the contractors and sales reps enrolled in their programs. And also, pace providers have to determine the consumer's ability to repay, including income verification, before entering into a pace assessment. So just additional measures to make sure that people aren't signing up for something they can't afford in the long run. Staff's opinion generally on, on this is that there are a number of communities all throughout the valley and the state for that matter that have signed into these programs. They're well represented, and we do believe that additional allowance of these types of programs creates a better business environment in terms of competition for Riverbank. Prior to the meeting, the mayor and myself, and I believe the council was, was copied on it through email, received a letter from Central Valley Association of Realtors that requested essentially that council consider postponing their decision this evening because they have a number of concerns, three of which I'll just very briefly touch on in their letter. They are concerned about the misrepresentation of the likelihood of transferability of these loans when you sell your home, the misrepresentation, or misrepresenting the impact of an improvement on the home's value, and they're finally concerned that sometimes homeowners do not fully understand how the financing works. In general, based on sort of my research into the matter, many of these issues seem to be dealt with by those, these regulatory bills that I just read through for you. And there's been a couple more that have been more recently approved by Governor Brown, just as sort of a group of bills he's been approving towards the end of his term. We have two members of these respective companies here this evening to address questions and concerns, and council can consider either to approve, deny, or postpone this decision this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, with the concerns, they had listed three concerns here, but they're specifically addressed in both AB 1282, I mean, 84, and also by the, the previous bill that was approved. And it appears that there's also an enforcement authority against any provider who misrepresents the, the program. So, okay, I just want to, that's clear. That's correct.
But I think that the both reps that are here this evening would tell you that this industry has never been more regulated than it is today.
Okay. All right. No comments? I'll open it up to the public for comment on item Seeing no comment on item 6.1, I bring it back to the council. Yes, questions? No? Any, any consideration? Go ahead.
Have we experienced any of these situations where some of our customers have done this pace program within our community?
No. You know, I think that, so here's what we have experienced, and this goes back a ways. Recently, we've received, at least I'm aware of, no complaints. Early on in the process, a lot of communities were dealing with a problem where contractors who would work to put in, you know, let's say, a new AC unit, would approach people that, and essentially explain the program to them, but maybe not fully, and represent that they were part of the HERO program or part of the pace program. When they really had no, you know, affiliation, they just hoped to win that contract if these people decided to sign up for this type of financing. And so, we, I think since I've been here, I've got maybe two of those complaints, and what we'll do typically is just contact the funding program and say, hey, there's some contractor out there that's representing themselves as part of your organization. And usually, they address it really, really quick because their reputation is what they, you know, sort of, is the most valuable thing for them to continue to do business in, in California. So that, that's the only major issue that, that we have received in our office. You know, obviously, some, some real estate agents are concerned that if you have an additional loan out on a property, sometimes you can have issues when you're trying to transact the property later. But that may be true of a second on a home. It may be true of, of a number of different creative financing techniques you could do for things in your home. So, but in general, in terms of my office, we've received nearly no complaints.
Okay, thank you.
I've received phone calls from people trying to represent themselves as a pace contractor when they are not. So that's, that's the only issue I think that is out there, as, as you said. But they're still making those phone calls now. So I always refer them either to the city offices or to the pace themselves.
And, you know, one of the things we can additionally do is, is in our community newsletters, we could put little PSAs that, you know, if you're not sure of, of something that's you've been approached with, please call us and we'll direct you to the correct people to speak with to make sure that you're, you're talking with a legitimate salesperson.
I have another question, too. Do we have a heavy participation from our homeowners in this program?
So I would encourage people to go to the HERO programs website. You can pull up a map, and it'll show you essentially, if you type in Riverbank, it'll show you little dots of where projects have been done, and you'll notice there's quite a few in Riverbank that have been done under both programs.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll bring it back to the council for consideration.
I think we should, go ahead and hear from this other group over here. They're asking us to just postpone so they can make a presentation.
I have no intention on postponing this. We'll either yea or nay it.
All righty.
I say we just go ahead and approve a resolution, these resolutions.
I'll second, is that a motion?
6.1.
Okay.
I'll second it.
By continuing it, we already have two companies that are doing the, the pace program, and a third one is just adding competition. So we have a motion to approve in a second?
Council members Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
No.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Item 6.2, a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between Stanislaus County Department of Environmental Resources and the City of Riverbank regarding onsite wastewater treatment systems, OWTS, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, and as, as our Public Works Director Michael is, is passing these out.
Killing a tree. Come on, Michael, easy on those trees.
So, Michael's going to give an update as to a request we've received from Stanislaus County Department of Environmental Resources to enter into agreement that, what it all comes down to is septic tanks, the bottom line. There's a lot of acronyms detail in here, but Michael's going to try to share what it means in plain English, I think.
Plain English. Evening, Mayor, council. So basically, like Sean said, it, it's an acronym that the, the State Water Board came up with. So...
To the right. Arrow to the...
There you go. So, an onsite wastewater treatment system, or the OWTS, as the state likes to refer to it, is basically just a septic system.
Okay.
So, and all of us that's been around long enough knows what a septic system is. So, and you basically, you know, you've got three types where you've got either an individual for residence or communal for a set of residents or a large building or something to that effect, and an alternative that you can, can do it. So, basically, how this all came about is that it actually started on the coast in 2013, where the coastal regional water quality control boards told everybody we had an issue because of the water that's being leached out of the field on these septic systems and reaching the groundwater. And in their infinite wisdom, they were just going to do it on the coast, but then as they went along in their infinite wisdom, they decided to do it statewide. And so in essence, basically what the regional board wanted to do is put a permit on every septic system in the state of California to begin with. So in the process, they kind of finally figured out that that might not be such a good idea, so they came up with some type of regional program, and this is what we're basically referring to now, is that they approached the counties because most of your septic tank systems are in the county and not within the cities, because most cities nowadays have a sanitary sewer system. They approached the counties to say, hey, if you will come in and develop what's called a lamp or a local area management plan, and see if you can get the other cities to agree to yours, your lamp, and to use your lamp as part of theirs, and get an memorandum of understanding with all the cities, then we could regionalize this in essence per county instead of every city having to do this. So when this came about, and I was notified by the Regional Water Quality Control Board that this was a requirement, we had basically three choices. We could make the arrangement with the Stanislaus County, we could implement an OWTS policy tier one and begin submitting annual reports, and also have to develop a lamp. So, in essence, we'd have to hire an engineer and get a consultant and come up with our plan, get the regional board to approve it, and that would probably range in the $15,000 or $20,000 range. So since the county had already done all this, and they approached us with the MOU, this was kind of a no-brainer. We go under the county's management, under their lamp, and basically the benefits for the memorandum of understanding with Stanislaus County, the City of Riverbank will not have to develop the lamp, obviously, and Stanislaus County will be responsible for all regulatory issues. The only thing they will be responsible for is supplying the information to Stanislaus County. So if they, if we have somebody within our city limits that needs to put in a septic system, then they would have to go to the county, and county would have to side it for him. And what I mean that, the county would have to tell him where they could put it. But here's the caveat. If you're within the city limits of Riverbank, the municipal code says that if you have a septic tank system and it fails, and there is sewer available, you are required to hook up. So basically, while we're, all of the Stanislaus County's going to do for us is the oversight. So it saves us staff time and it saves us money. So obviously, when we get to that, and, and within the MOU, we have the ability to terminate it in writing within 90 days if we so choose. So basically, what staffers are recommending is that we go ahead and enter the MOU with Stanislaus County for this oversight, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
When is the letter due?
The letter that was initially given to us gave us the, the February, March, or the February date this year. All we had to do is let, I basically had to send an email to the gentleman that's actually overseeing this for the regional board and saying, we're, we're negotiating with the county.
Okay.
So we've already put them on notice that we're negotiating with... So, we've already put them on notice that we're negotiating with the county. So, that's all they needed from us.
Says a letter of response is due by February 28, 2018?
That's what the letter read. But because we are... Because they came up with this MOU, and because they're looking at the counties to hopefully do this, what they're looking for is every county in the state of California to handle this. So, doing that... So, I mean, you know, there may be some cities out there that I know that every county or every city within Stanislaus County has been approached, and everybody is on board with it, with the exception of Turlock. Turlock has got a couple of issues with it, for whatever reason. It's kind of a no-brainer to me, but that's them. That's not us.
All right. Any other questions for Michael? Anyone from the public have any comment? Bring it back to the council. One quick one. What happens to county islands?
They're still under county control. So, if there's a septic system there, it's up to the county to enforce it.
If it fails, do they hook up to the city?
No. They're not required to, only if they're in the city limits.
I was thinking of the River Heights.
Actually, I just had a gentleman today that's out on Santa Fe that talked to me about it, and we do have sewer available, but he's in the county. And his septic system, basically what he told me is his tank's got a hole in the top of it, so he was looking to try to hook up to us. And so... But his run is tremendous. He's about 1,000 feet away from us, so it would cost him a lot more money to get to us than it would to. And then, the issue you would have there is that's an out-of-boundary service.
Right.
So, then we run into LAFCO, right? So...
Anyone from the council have any recommendations?
Motion that we approve item 6.2.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 6.2 in a second.
Councilmembers Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.1, staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items. The City of Riverbank has two RFPs out for people to consider and propose if they're interested. We have the spatial analysis, which council requested that we did as part of strategic planning, which, again, will look at all of the city offices, plan out 50 years, and figure out what kind of space is required for us to be able to house the kind of staff we're going to need, considering, you know, if the city continues to grow or as things change in the future, and hopefully create essentially a master plan so that council can start to think about how we move towards, you know, changes we're going to need in our building space. You know, for example, one is just this room we're in. Currently, it's sufficient if we don't have a very, very busy night, but I think, you know, some of the meetings we've had where it's been packed, it's insufficient. We have to use overflow seating. So, at a certain point, we're going to need to have a city hall that can appropriately house, you know, all the services that we provide here. So, that's out. We hope to get a good response and move forward on that, and we'll be bringing that to council for consideration. Also, IT services. The city is currently in the process of looking for proposals on the outsourced IT work, and so if you know of anyone that is qualified to do that, that runs an IT company, have them take a look at our website and submit. The other two items I have is Norma, who works on a lot of our emergency training, wanted everybody to know that there is a Shakeout, which is called... It's the 2018 Great Shakeout Earthquake Drills, which will be October 18th, International Shakeout Day, October 18th at 10:18 a.m. And there, if you go to shakeout.org, you can learn how to essentially plan for an earthquake. It's got all kinds of information about a kit and what you do with your family and how you communicate with them should there be an earthquake, and just try to get people thinking about planning for a disaster so that if one were to happen, you know what you're going to do. So, it's shakeout.org, and then on 10:18, at 10:18 a.m., join millions of people worldwide who practice how to drop cover and hold on. And then, finally, councilmember Jones Cruz and I have been talking about, are going to start working on an application for next year's League Helen Putnam Award. We're working on probably two applications, one to do with a swimming program that Sharks and Mermaids that we've put together that's been very successful, and the other to do with the LRA project in general, which is, everybody knows, has been super successful. So, we're going to start early so we can get submitted on time and hopefully be up there for an award next year.
Thank you. Council comments? Councilmember Fosse?
Thank you, Mayor.
I am overly excited to be watching the construction at Rozelle and Claratina. I live close to that corner. I drive that all the time. My daughter goes to Enoch's, so I'm excited that the construction has finally started. I just want to caution everybody to take your time going through that intersection, have a lot of patience, maybe use alternatives, so that the construction can move forward easily, and they can get it done as soon as possible.
Is that Clarabelle, not Clarantina?
Is it Clarabelle? Clarabelle, sorry. Rozelle.
Rozelle.
Where the big house was. It is no more. Sorry, Rozelle and Clarabelle. Wine and cheeses this weekend. I will be there both days, and I'm excited to see everybody there.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Just like to say that I'd like to see everybody attend the wine and cheese, and it's getting dark earlier. There's a lot of kids out there, so drive safely.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I don't have any...
There we go. I don't have anything else to add, other than I hope to see you guys this weekend at the Cheese and Wine Festival.
Vice Mayor?
Crossroads Elementary was not able to be here tonight for the proclamation for the Walk to School Day. The school representatives were at the district school board meeting tonight because the Crossroads Elementary was being recognized for some great work that they've been doing there. But they will receive their proclamation in the mail, and a lot of work went into our CIP program, so we want to thank our staff for that, and we just really appreciate the information that you're giving to us as a council and also for our residents, so they know what our plans are for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff and council. One of the issues that we've talked about for strategic planning but haven't really planned a great deal on is providing the housing that's necessary, especially low-income housing. Talking over the last couple of days, we should discuss, you know, what would be a good way to generate funds. I'd like to take to the LAFCO board, which we can't discuss right now, that instead of doing ag land mitigation, we take the funding from ag land mitigation and establish a fund for low-income housing, which for our project coming on up could generate close to $3.9 million with the ability for matching funds from both the state and federal and from the county. We could be in the $15 million by closely working with the LAFCO. That's going to be an issue because it's ag land mitigation, but I feel that we have a housing crisis, not a agricultural crisis. Secondly, coming on up will be the 100th anniversary of the Armistice Day, which is now Veterans Day. So, I'm going to be asking the churches and anyone who has bells to ring the bell on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. That is the official time of Veterans Day, and so we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks. And finally, I hope everyone comes out to the Cheese and Wine. It should be a great day. It should be... The weather's perfect, and so is the city. So, with that, we move into closed session, starting with item 8.1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property 062-031-005 through 007. Agency negotiator, Sean Scully, city manager. Property negotiator, Ametis, Inc. Item 8.2, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code 54957.6. Agency representative, Sean Scully, city manager. Employee organization mid-management bargaining units. Item 8.3, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code 54956.9 to potential cases. At this time, the public will have a maximum limit of five minutes to comment on any closed session item. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on the closed session items? Seeing none, we adjourn to closed session. Seeing none, we adjourn to closed session. The regular city council LRA board meetings for Tuesday, October ninth, is reconvened. Item nine point one, report from closed session on item eight point one, conference with real property negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. Item nine point two, report from closed session on item eight point two. Conference with labor negotiators, city manager and mid-management bargaining unit. Direction has been provided to staff. Item nine point three, report from closed session on item eight point three. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two potential cases. Direction has been provided to staff. The next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, October twenty-third at six PM. This meeting is now adjourned.